You got water, right?
Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Lamson. Here. Let's stand for the silent prayer and the flag salute. Councilmember Sandu, I think I'm gonna have you do the flag salute since I believe it's your birthday week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, would you like to replay the statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, April 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 20th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Are there any agenda approval additions or deletions?
I will pull the item number nine.
Number nine?
For discussion.
Okay, delegate signing authority bank arrangements?
Uh, yes.
Anything else? Do we do presentation first? Yes, okay. We have presentations of the Sunday market by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Our special events manager, Jackie Garcia, will be discussing our Taste of the Galt Market.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We had a slide of the flyer? No? Okay. So, today, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be presenting to you a new event series called The Taste of the Market, which is every second Sunday, starting in June, on June 9th, on the market grounds. Taste of the Market will be a smaller version and bringing a new shopping and family fun experience to the community. The following is a highlight of vendors that will be available at the market. We'll be having produce, variety of merchandise, delicious food, entertainment, as well as a youth treasure row and kids play area. Our hope is that this will benefit the market and Galt by increasing access to fresh nutritious food, supporting healthy communities, creating a relationship with our customers and, as well as new potential customers, bring awareness to our Tuesday and Wednesday market, potentially bringing additional revenue to the market, and no additional funding will be requested. Directly contributing to the city of Galt goals to pursue economic development opportunities and improving Galt's quality of life. The Galt Market hopes you will continue supporting the market's new endeavors and celebrate with us by visiting us on a regular market day or during the series. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanna stress a couple of things.
Okay.
In case there's some concerns from the citizens. This is not gonna be another Tuesday or Wednesday market. It's a very small scaled back event. Again, we're doing it within our budget, hoping to just bring the Tuesday market. You know, the biggest thing that we hear is that, oh, we can't attend, we're working, you know, our citizens. So, we're gonna bring a little bit of the Galt Market to them on the weekends, on the Sunday. So, it, the traffic impact won't be there, the volume of people won't be there. I just wanna assure everybody that it's, at this point, it's just gonna be a small scale.
Okay. And the $25 vendor fee, is that less than what we normally charge?
That's about what we do charge, anywhere between 20, $25.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Armando, could you just, for those that are watching, could, and for myself, could you give me just a quick overview of kinda what it's about? Like, as far as, like, tell us, like, they're gonna have music there and just the nuts and bolts of it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have performers. We were having music performers at the Tuesday, Wednesday market. We decided to bring them to our Sunday market. We'll have vendors, food vendors, and retail vendors from our Tuesday, Wednesday markets selling at, at our Sunday Taste of the Galt Market. Just a very smaller scale Galt Market Day.
So, there could be some vendors that are there, that are your normal Tuesday, Wednesdays that'll come.
Yes.
But there also could be some that don't come on Tuesday, Wednesday.
At, the majority, if not all, are from our Tuesday, Wednesday market. And they're very supportive. They would like us to open on the weekends, so, you know, it's something that we're just looking at, seeing what we can do.
Is it gonna be in, like, a more consolidated part of the market grounds?
Yes, it'll be in the northwest corner, next to the soccer field.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's exciting. I know we've been asking for something like this on the weekend, so hopefully everybody will come out and check it out. Anything else? All right, on to public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
I have one card. I'd like to call Jennifer Hillegoss and Taffy Lacy. To the podium, please. Thank you.
Good evening, guys. We are coaching the boys' T-ball. And just a couple concerns that we had the last few weeks that we've been coaching. One is, we get our t-shirts for our little guys, and this isn't, like, you know, all of them, but some of them are, like, a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller. We don't know who orders them or who's actually doing all the, getting stuff ready. I'm not sure exactly who does it. But that was one of our concerns, was just getting some of the outfit the kids a little bit better. We also have a price of $65 and $25 for a late fee, so that's like anytime you're outside of the very small window. And we only get t-shirts. This is the only thing that they get to play. There's no hats, there's no anything else. So, pretty much, these parents are paying $65 for a t-shirt. The field's not being, what is it?
Not being maintained how it should. When we picked up our equipment, we did have a broken tee, and we got our equipment in a garbage bag. Let's see, it's been very unorganized. They don't, they didn't know if we were gonna have our shirts on time. We call, they didn't know about opening day. So, the last three years, opening day has been canceled. They have not, they just bypass it, and the kids don't get anything. We looked around at other, like Elk Grove, Lodi. When they cancel their opening day, they schedule it for a different day, which is exciting for the kids. That's part of sports for them. We feel that that's kind of very unorganized. Safety, so I don't know if you guys see veterans field. Some of the diamonds don't have the side rails on them, or the side fencing, so it's just a fence. It's not big enough to even protect the kids. The benches are, there used to be benches for the kids to sit in. Now, we're having to corral 10 kids to make sure they aren't coming around that little bit of the ones that aren't, the safety fencing, and make sure they don't get hit. You know, and little kids like to run in front of those fences. So, it's a big safety issue for us. I think as parents, we've had a lot of parents that are very concerned. A lot of parents say, we want to go outside of Parks and Rec. Where's our money going? We have, we have 10 T-ball teams this year for boys. That's $6,500 that our parents are paying just for the boys. That's not including the girl T-ball. That's just for the 10 teams for the boys. Like we said, the fields aren't always being maintenance, there's high grass, there's...
We don't have to have umpires, so it's not, there's anybody outside of that being paid, except for maintaining the grass, which is like, you know, coming out once a week, mowing the lawn. We're playing on the veterans' soccer field, I guess you would say. To us, it's, I don't know. The equipment thing was kind of an issue because it's like when I went in to take the broken, this was our second practice we went to, and one of our, little bit of a heavy hitter, little guys, little, hit it, and it just flopped over. And when I took it back in, it was like, well, what happened? And I was like, you gave us equipment that was probably from three years ago.
Yeah, our bats are old, we got used balls. Six used balls.
And they said, please make sure you bring these back. And it's like, we had to buy extra stuff just to get these kids to be able to play. So, it's not like, you know, we're getting stuff that's prepared for even...
And we want it to be better, 'cause like I said, it's just not our team, it's quite a few teams. We want Galt to have, like, a great, you know, sports program, 'cause these kids are gonna grow up here. So, we're just very, a little concerned about, you know, where the money's going. How can we put more into it, into the kids? Get equipment up to par, get some safety fencing on the side, and maybe put some benches back out so the kids can sit there.
Or just drop the pricing to 35. I mean, I don't know.
We're just here for help from you guys to see what we can do.
So, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Is, would you guys be willing to meet with Director Solis and kind of go over some discussion? Then we can maybe have a report back to council?
Absolutely.
On that?
Do you have her contact information, Donna?
It's on the card.
Okay.
We have your contact information.
Contact you tomorrow.
Okay.
What age group was that?
We have four and five, four, five, and six.
You guys play at veterans, right?
We do play at veterans.
And we have a lot of teams, there's 10 teams that go out there. And that's just the boys, that's not the girls', you know, softball. 'Cause my, my six-year-old's in the girls' softball. So, and that's another thing, is like, her coach came to me and she was like, we don't have our equipment, we're not, you know, nothing's been...
Yeah, two practices, they had no equipment.
So, and they had to go out and purchase on their own equipment just to get a practice going, so...
Well, I just wanna let you know that we, I mean, I and the rest of the council, we really are passionate about making our Parks and Rec and everything as best as it can. And I know Director Solis does as well. So, I'm sure when you meet with him, give him your input. If you have other parents that are coaching, come. And just tell them how you feel, 'cause input's important, so we can try to improve on what we're doing and...
We did have a lot of parents that wanted to come, and we didn't wanna overtake this place.
Oh, we value your input, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll be in contact and...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can do, thank you so much. All right, so do we go over the pulled one, or we go over the consent first? Consent first. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Sandu?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion?
Uh, yeah, today I met with, on the South County HCP, we did interviews for an executive director and the board's decision we announced next meeting, two weeks from today.
Councilmember Sand, I mean Lozano?
Yeah, just a couple of things, real quick. I attended the SACOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting where we went over the budget for the next year. One of the things that kinda was interesting to me was the SACOG budgets made up of federal, state, local, and other money. The federal percentage of federal money is about 42%, states 14, local money is about 22, and then service to others, so things that SACOG does where they're paid for services, it's about 15%. So, it's pretty interesting to see how it's split and where all the money comes from. So, it looks like we're gonna get a balanced budget brought to us soon. The other thing that they talked about was the Green Means Go advocacy program, which I reported on last meeting. They, they are asking the state for $400 million over four years, $100 million a year, which is a huge ask. But they have Assemblymember Cooley and Senator Pan, who are interested in hearing that, not in, in legislation, but in, as a budget request. And so, they're going through that process, spending a lot of time doing that. And they talked a little bit about government housing proposal, the governor's housing proposal that we mentioned a few meetings ago here, and how it's tied to, possibly tied to roadway construction money. It looks like, at least from the staff's perspective, that they're not going to attach penalties for not building certain types of housing to, to roadway maintenance funds. So, that looks like that we're probably gonna escape that a little bit, so... And that's how, all I have on SACOG. Sacramento Transportation Authority, I attended a meeting there last week. And there were presentations by a few of the cities, including Ayleton, Citrus Heights, and Sacramento, and also Galt, on unmet transportation needs. And Mr. Selling did an awesome job presenting. The thing that I liked about the presentation that you did, and I think I mentioned, we talked about this, is that the last slide where he asked if there were any questions, was this huge picture of the hot air balloon event from last year. And one of my colleagues on the board turned to me and said, I didn't know you guys did that. And I said, well, we don't do it alone, but the chamber does it, and, and she's really interested in coming down and seeing what we're, seeing what it's all about next time. So, thank you for promoting our community the way you did and, and the presentation. So, thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I had the youth commission meeting, and it's, we have one more meeting until graduation happens, so we will be conducting interviews for new youth commission members in the next couple of weeks. And then they will figure out what events... They also helped at the extravaganza, and they had a pancake breakfast, and that went really well. I have my air quality board meeting coming up next week, and that's about it for me. So now, information consent? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April, or accept the meetings as submitted? Receive and file warrants as submitted? Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Contract Amendment 2 to Task Order Number 2 with the Corolo Engineers, an additional $15,000 for construction management services related to the industrial water treatment plant 2016 deep well project, Phase 2? Adopt ordinance number 2019-02, amending the district zoning map of the city of Galt for the Parlin Oaks project? Adopt a resolution approving the city of Galt Senate Bill 1, Transportation Project List for 2019-20? Accept by motion the city of Galt Single Audit Report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018? Adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute and submit periodic grant documents on behalf of the city of Galt for all Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle, grants for which the city is eligible? Adopt a resolution approving the final map for Morali Estates and authorizing and filing and recording, and recordation thereof? And two, authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement with 50 Galt LLC and the filing of, and reordination thereof? And accept the treasurer's report as submitted?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. Roll call vote, please. Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer, roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson? Aye, motion passes, five to zero. And pulled, we have the delegate signing authority for bank arrangements, Councilmember Sandu, hold that.
Yes, the reason I pull up, I just wanna be a brief, uh, I talked to Tom, uh, last week. I just kind of brief explanation for the record, uh, you know, we changing the authority, what, why, the reason and how long we doing, uh, uh, mayor and vice mayor that was authorized to, for the checks? And the other thing on, on that was, uh, we changing from two sign to the one signer. Uh, just be brief explanation why we doing, what kind of benefit and-
This staff report was largely put together by, uh, our finance director, Claire Tyson, and so, uh, for the technical reasons that this comes to you in this form now and is, is, is seeking those changes, I'd, I'd like to give her the courtesy of being able to, uh, walk through that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, so when I began, we took a look at the, um, these policies and procedures um, in collaboration with our city treasurer, um, and found that our policies are very old in this regard, so the prior resolution is the mayor, vice mayor, um, finance director, city manager, treasurer, were signers, um, these signatures are only for the mayor and vice mayor, only facsimile signatures. So they don't actually have the ability to review or really do anything before their signature goes on, on the documents. Um, and it's kind of an old practice that, uh, I'm not sure of any city that I know of that still does that. Um, I did check in with the bank to kind of confer with them to see if they had any, um, agencies in their realm or any businesses for that matter, and they said no, so, um, the single signer is more commonly done now and primarily that's because the, the people who are reviewing all of the documents before the signature, and it's a facsimile signature, before the facsimile signature goes on the warrants, that's where all of your, your checks and balances occur, so all of the, um, review is really done by the, the finance team in advance of that. Um, the exceptions are, there are certain things that the city treasurer reviews before they occur, all wires are, are being reviewed by that, by the city treasurer in addition, but it's all being done kind of electronically. So it doesn't really make sense to have people have facsimile signature on something they don't really touch or review in advance. So that's kind of the industry practice of why it's being changed, so we were just trying to update our current, um, practices. I hope that answers your question, but if you have any others?
Um, thank you.
And I really appreciate having that off there, because, um, I'm totally comfortable with not having my name on a bunch of checks I haven't approved or seen, and having my signature out there on, I don't know how many checks we write, we approve the warrants after the fact, so it is a little strange to have your name on there before they're actually approved.
Right.
So thank you.
So the practice that we've been using is more like, it seemed like it was like an old school symbolic type of thing than-
Yeah.
Than really, um, I don't know what's the word, procedural or, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna now have the treasure, the, um, we're gonna have Sean, uh, our treasurer, sign the checks now, right, and it's not really like he's sitting there signing, they're all-
Well, and I think that you have the two signatures on the check is, in the old days, before facsimile signatures, someone had to come in and sign all the checks, and so there were two signatures, and one of the other things that, that occurs here under this policy is that there's a, a, a separation between the governor, govern-
Governors.
The legislative body that is approving the, uh, the, 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 the warrants themselves and the signatory on the check, and so, again, it's a, it's, it's an additional check and balance, and you, a way you could think of it, under the old method, you had, uh, potentially people who were voting to approve the, the, the checks also signing them, and so and now there is that, that separation.
Thank you for the clarification.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Any else? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution approving delegation of signing authority for bank arrangements to the city treasurer, city manager and finance director and require one signature for warrants, please?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by, was that Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Lozano, roll call vote? Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson? Aye, motion passes, five to zero. All right, did I say approve the consent calendar? I think I did, all right, schedule matters, do we have any? None tonight. None tonight. Regular calendar, city manager's office, subject temporary infill residential fee reduction program, boundary expansion.
Uh, mayor, I, on, on this subject, I may have conflict of interest, so, uh, one of my property have, uh, have acres on, on this boundary, so I will refuse myself from, uh, this discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandu.
Should I wait until?
Yeah.
Again, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haglen, who, having Mr. Rice?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council members, Chris Arias, Community Development Director. Filling in for Amy Mendez tonight, so I'll give you this brief, uh, staff report. So as mentioned, the item you have before you is an amendment to the temporary, uh, infill fee reduction program, we're essentially changing the boundaries. If you recall, the council approved the infill program back in December twenty eighteen, and at that meeting, the council asked us to explore expanding the program to the northeast side of the city. So based on that council direction, uh, staff explored looking at properties in the northeast area, and the bulk of the northeast area is comprised of the northeast, properties within the northeast area specific plan, and those properties pretty much have development attached to them, so we looked at properties that were outside that plan area. So the properties we identified that we thought fit the program mold were those, uh, well, they're shown on your map, I think as attachment to, but they're generally, uh, bound by or along Ayers Lane and then also East Stockton Boulevard, north of Ayers Lane. And so these properties meet kind of the criteria of infill development, they are infill, you know, they're less than five acres, uh, they're difficult to develop, so they're, they're very similar to the properties we looked at in the other part of the city. So, and as you know, uh, you adopted the infill fee program because infill really benefits the city, especially when we're making use of vacant lots. It's a way to get rid of a ISOR, you know, a nuisance property, and you replace it with essentially a property that increases, uh, the, the property tax base for the city. In addition to that, it's a way for us to get housing without expanding, uh, the city boundaries and services, so infill development makes sense. No other changes are requested in the program, uh, the funding still comes from the same source, which is a seventy-five percent reduction in the traffic and park impact fees, and then waiving the policy document, the planning policy document recovery fee. So with that, uh, you know, that ends our presentation and we'd be available to answer any questions you may have on that.
I appreciate you guys doing this, because we, we did ask you to attack this for us, um, Councilmember Lozano?
I, I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Rice, um, so just so I'm clear, and I think I understand it, the, the properties in the northeast specific plan, all of those that would be eligible for this program already have attached development to it?
No, so the properties that we have chosen to expand the program, there's no development proposal on any of those properties. So they are all vacant, they've been vacant for quite some time, they were part of the city prior to the northeast area specific plan, when the northeast area, plan area came in, they were, that was annexed to the city. These properties were already in the city, so they were part of the old city, so to speak.
Okay.
So they, they are outside that plan area.
Let me ask it a different way, because maybe I'm not-
It could be me too.
Articulating the way I need to. Um, there are properties up in the east, northeast area, um, one is the northwest corner of Corillian and Walnut, right across from where, um, we just approved the Parlin-
Correct.
Is that property eligible under this plan?
No.
Is it because it's too large?
It is too large, correct, it is above the five acre minimum, in addition to that, we feel that that can develop on its own, that there, there is enough scale there for it to develop under the normal programs, and then again, it's in the northeast area that had rules to kind of help it develop in a way, so for example, based on, uh, fee structure, the, um, the traffic impact fees, a little bit less for northeast area specific plan development versus the rest of the city.
Okay. Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same, thanks, Rich, um, so basically, this is targeting, this is, this is targeting our challenged properties, the small stuff that developers normally don't look at, because it's gonna be like a, you know, it could be like a duplex or triplex or something maybe a little larger or and, and, and the fees in the past wouldn't pencil out for somebody to wanna do something with it.
Yeah, bullseye, I mean, with these smaller parcels, what we're experiencing is based on, you know, all the rising costs, the cost of land, the cost of fees, the cost of construction. You know, if there's not scale there, it's tough for development to pencil out, unless you know, the property owner themselves, where they've gotten a property, uh, cheaply because they've held it for some time, maybe they can make it work, but it's our understanding that, uh, the properties that we've selected are not by developers, they're, um, don't have interest in development and most likely would have to sell, so that's kind of what makes them challenging, uh, it's just, it's based on their size.
And a lot of these are puzzle pieces, right, I mean, they're, they're just, we're just kind of like, they've been skipped over for whatever reason and and some of them are blight, I've looked at some of them, and, uh, my last question would be, um, is there still, because I think we mentioned this when we passed the ordinance, resolution the first time, is that some of us had asked if, um, this was gonna be expanded to include, um, the same exact thing but for commercial, not just applying to the various residential, so is that something we're still looking at doing?
Yes, we're still looking into it, I don't believe we're ready to come forward with that, but yes, we are still exploring that opportunity.
So would that, if that, if that, at some point that came to us, then it would just kind of go back and it would apply to anything at that point that still wasn't developed, would just-
That would be the intent, correct, the smaller parcels that are challenging, uh, for whatever reason, it may be the commercial, I, I would still think it would be based on size, because my understanding of, in the definition of infill is really five acres and under, so I wouldn't imagine that we expand beyond that size.
Because I saw a couple lot, a couple of them that were in this area were commercial, and I thought that was some ones that I had hoped that someday would be done something with, so.
Well, that's a good eye, and, um, they're, at the north, the northeast corner of Ayers and East Stockton Boulevard, those currently have a highway commercial zone. Uh, but we do plan on changing that zoning, uh, this is, that would be a separate project, so we wanted to include it, so when we do change the zone, that they're already in the program area. I do plan to come back to council next month, I think, for a request to go after a planning grant that would allow us to, in advance, do some, uh, you know, plan updates that would help encourage housing production, and one of the things that I wanna target is looking at possible rezones to encourage housing production, and I believe that site, you know, would be identified to help that.
The site I was thinking was the one, if you cross the freeway, um, on Amador, cross the overpass, you take a left right there on the front edge, there's the duplexes on the right side of the road, on the left side, there's just, it's right there adjacent to the car wash.
I know, it's not that little, there's that strip right along.
That's highway commercial, right?
Correct, so that one we did not include, because we still, you know, I remember, uh, when I first got here, there was a development proposal for commercial, uh, use there, and we still periodically get requests for commercial development there, so I'm still hopeful that we can get some, some additional commercial development, uh, on that side, uh, south of the car wash, and it's not necessarily the best place for housing, you know, right along the freeway like that, so that's why we kind of kept it.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
You're welcome.
So Chris, since we have, um, brought this forward on the west side a little bit earlier than this, have there been any bites on the infill lots?
Yeah, uh, I think the first, well, I don't think I know, the first bite really was the Trail Ridge Apartments. They would not have pulled their permit had we not done this program, so that expansion is a direct result of the uh, policy that you implemented, in addition to that, we've, uh, the phone's been ringing off the hook, so uh, we've been, uh, meeting with quite a few developers on some smaller lots, uh, in, you know, the older area, and I'm confident that we'll be bringing some projects forward, uh, in the near future.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion?
No, I just, uh, just one last comment, I, thank you so much for doing this and working hard, uh, to try to, uh, take care of some of this infill.
Yeah.
Um, I, I personally, and from what I've heard from folks out in the community is, um, we understand that we have to develop, you know, to stay afloat as a city, we are gonna have to have a building and stuff like that, but uh, I would rather take care of what we can within the city limits that we have already, uh, before we, uh, we go outside of that, and so, but I think it's important that we have some development to help pay the bills uh, long-term, and, uh, but this, this program really helps drive, I think, uh, some, some folks to come in and do some smaller projects, so.
Agreed.
Thanks.
And I just wanna note that Amy Mendez really did the hard work associated with it.
We know that.
Yeah, we, you did, you got the second team today, so.
We appreciate you jumping in.
Thank Amy for us.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt, oh, is there any public comments on this, anybody out there? Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution amending the temporary infill residential fee reduction program to expand the infill development area boundaries and include properties identified on the east side of Galt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote? Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu? Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson? Aye, motion passes, four to zero. Absent Sandu. Jackie, can I have you let him know to come back in, thank you.
He left?
Hold on. Maybe he didn't understand, okay? All right, next up, special event sponsorship application overview fiscal year twenty, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. Director Solis?
I'm bringing back up, uh, Jackie Garcia again, special events manager to, uh, give the presentation.
Hello again.
Hello.
Um, so, thank you for your time. Today, I'm gonna go over, here's the list of the seventeen special events that we reviewed on April second. Each event that is listed, the costs associated on the right-hand side. If you don't have any questions far as regarding the events or the cost, we're asking for your recommendation and provide a direction to staff regarding the approval of the amounts for each event.
It's hard to see that, I believe we might have some discussion, do we have any?
I just wanted to clarify, so the, the amount that we're approving for all these is within the, the amount that, uh, throughout this program that we were doing the sponsorship, right? I'll be glad to answer that, there is no max, there is no cap on the dollar amount, uh, overall. For each individual, it's up to five thousand dollars. See, I, I actually have a question that, I know you said that last time, but, um, I was approached by somebody after that asked me, so I thought there was a cap of a certain amount that we did this program, so if we had fifty instead of seventeen, if we had fifty organizations come out and I'll ask for forty-nine hundred dollars next time, we would be looking at approving the money times that many, right?
Right.
Okay. I think that's the only question I had, um. Yeah, thanks.
I think the chief got the job done, thank you. Councilmember Lozano, you look like you have some-
I, I do have something, I, you know, I, I-
You know, I, I absolutely think that every one of these organizations are worthy of some assistance from the city. You know, you look at the partnership we have with the school, the high school district and, and through FFA and, and the chamber, and everybody does such wonderful things, and I, and I absolutely believe that these nonprofits are truly the fabric of what holds this community together. But we, but, and, and today, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward on all of them. However, I will say this, as we go into the future, what Vice Mayor Farmer said I hadn't even really thought about. Forty nine hundred times, or forty, yeah, forty nine hundred times however many come forward, at some point, we're going to have to make some decisions. And I think as it relates to our overall budget in the next couple of years, we're going to have to make some of those same types of decisions in different areas. So, I don't want to lose the thought that we're going to have to have some, you know, fiscal responsibility as a community, and this isn't a, this isn't an issue of the special events request. I just want to make that point, that we are thinking about what that looks like in moving forward. It wasn't too long ago that we had a finance report by Ms. Tyson that showed us running out of money in three years. And so, whatever we can do to collaborate with these same organizations moving forward, I think we need to continue to do, and, and be cognizant of the fact that we could have a time where many more organizations come forward and say, hey, we'd like X amount of dollars, and so we're going to have to make, be prepared to make some tough choices at that point, so... That's all I have to say, but I don't want anybody to misconstrue the fact that I'm hesitant to approve this. I just want to make sure that as we're looking forward in the next couple of years, that we are cognizant of the fact that we, we have limited amount of funds in many areas that I think we need to tighten our belts on.
Yeah, and I just want to add to that, too. Yeah, Rich is so right. You know, I look at this list here and, and unfortunately, well, I guess I'm saying fortunate, maybe a bad use of words, but it'd be great if we could afford to, you know, if our budget was in better shape than it is and we had, you know, twice as many events being put on by, it'd be awesome if we could do that. For me, looking at the different, you know, all these different organizations here, the things they're doing, I mean, this is what makes Galt, you know, what it is. I mean, the city can't put these events on, so unfortunately, we have to rely on these organizations and these people, most of them, you know, or all of them are volunteers, to do this. So, this is one of the things I enjoy about this job so far, is being able to allocate this kind of money, this kind of stuff. But I also want to, to people to know that we are in a budget crisis, and unfortunately, moving forward, there's going to be some tough decisions. But with that being said, too, I was talking to city manager yesterday in our meeting, and we were talking about some of the tough decisions that might be coming down the pipe for us in the future. But I'm, I want to say that I'm going to fight to keep stuff like this available because I think that, you know, try to find every means possible that we can make things right in our budget before we go after stuff like this. This is, this is very important to me. I think it's important to all of us, actually, so, just want to know that we're not, you know, hinting that we're going to ax all this. We're going to do what we can to try to keep this stuff alive, so that's what I had to add. Thanks.
Councilmember Sandu?
Yeah, the only, the same thing. You know, the other council member, they, you know, mentioned nonprofit organization, they're the backbone of our community, and certainly whatever, as a council member, we can do to help the nonprofit organization, we will help them. I believe this, the budget, the, the cost we have, I very much is with them. I think we should help, I think that the 22,000, something like that. And then also, same thing that other my council, what they mentioned, you know, make the budget is very important, too, you know, is, is the taxpayers' money. And the other thing is, is nonprofit organization, it's really, from my heart, we want, we would like to help them whatever we can. And also, you know, we can come in here, or the next three years, we're coming in, in a budget crisis. So, I'm talking, right now, we are only 17 events. It's maybe next year, year after, maybe 25 or more events. So, I, I believe we can think next year when the things comes up of how we can help and what the maximum we can help to the nonprofit organization. Thank you.
Thank you. And to concur, these kind of events are where my heart is. Over the two decades that I've lived in Galt, I've seen a lot of new events, and I've seen some events stop happening, so we do seem to have a rotating door around that. So last year, we had how many events, Mr. Solis, not that we approved that didn't happen?
I believe there was three of them.
Yeah, so we do have a few that drop out, and actually, that, that money was able to help us with the Sesqua Centennial because we weren't expecting that. So, this really is the heart, and we know every, every organization pays back to the city, whether they're doing scholarships for our youth or helping the less fortunate. And so it is, it is a cause, and I think the, the whole council, that's part of the reason we're up here. So, we really appreciate guys' hard work on this and working with us to get all these out there and approved. Is that it? All right.
I just, I do have a question of staff. I'm trying to, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to call you earlier, Armando, I was, was busy. What is the distinction between your soft cost, and I use by example Tiny Smiles, they have a soft cost estimated at $600 and a hard cost estimated at $4,200. What is the distinction there?
Soft cost would be the rental of Littleton. We don't charge for buildings, we don't charge for staffing like mid-managers and managers. So if a lieutenant went out and did traffic, he wouldn't be charged against a hard cost.
Okay.
So, and, and keep in mind, these are all estimates because we don't know who's going to work these events. We don't know exactly what may come up between now and the time the event is. These are all estimates, so...
And then another example, the FFA egg boosters, the Farm and Fork Dinner, it shows a hard cost of $900. Does that represent staffing or fees?
That is all, that would be, the majority will be the police officers that are assigned to that location for that night will be the bulk of that cost.
And that, I assume, is overtime, then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment? I think it was the Farm and Fork out there. All right, so can I get a motion to, it says review. Okay. Review the special event sponsorship request for fiscal year 2019, and upon a motion, provide direction to staff regarding the approval of events, monetary amounts, and/or in-kind contributions. So I think, do we need to reword that? To approve?
You can direct staff to fund all of the events listed in the agenda report.
So I would like to get a motion to direct staff to fund all the events listed in the agenda report. Is there any difference of opinion on that, council members?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Farmer. I'm going to let Councilmember Sandu have the second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Lamson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you for coming. All right. Is there any communication?
None tonight.
City clerks report?
We had all of the banners, the 150-year banners delivered this week, and they'll start going up tomorrow.
Nice, that's exciting. All right, comments by staff?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Mr. Selling?
Yeah, I just wanted to dovetail on Councilmember Lozano's comments. I appreciated the invitation and the opportunity to make a presentation to the Sacramento Transportation Authority. It was, there were good presentations by all the agencies, and it was just a good opportunity to meet them. And one pleasant surprise kind of to me was the representative from Elk Grove was actually a co-op student of mine, probably, I dare say, a little over 20 years ago, so it was great to see him. And, and maybe for anyone wondering about my eye, well, I'd love to say, as Vice Mayor Farmer suggested, it was during a X Games, you know, practice session. No, actually, I fell off a skateboard with my sons this weekend, so...
Oh, my. We actually thought community development had finally gone upstairs and taken over.
He violated the line.
I'm impressed that you got on a skateboard, just want to say. All right, Mr. Arias?
A couple of quick items. One, we are starting the sequel environmental process for the East Galt infill, otherwise known as the notch annexation project, so that's going to get underway. We expect that to take about six months. After that's finished, that's when we bring the project back to Planning Commission and you all for approval. In addition to that, we, you know, I think most of you are aware that we're moving forward with the Carillion Boulevard Complete Streets Master Plan. We had presented the Public Safety Committee a couple of weeks ago with a couple of different alternatives. One alternative showed Carillion Boulevard as a two-lane road with the use of roundabouts and an expanded protected bike lane. Another scenario, just in brief, showed a continual four-lane road with use of stop signs and stoplights, but still an expanded bike lane. Staff, the preferred scenario is going to be the two-lane with the roundabouts that we plan to present to Planning Commission in May, so we will make sure to notice and get public participation in that decision. And then once that's, once we get a preferred alternative, we'll start the sequel environmental process, and similar to the annexation, we figure about six months, and then we'll be back to Planning Commission and City Council. So, I think through the remainder of the year, and certainly the end of the year, we're going to be busy.
Thank you.
Chris, I wanted to comment on that thing. I've gotten a lot of emails about that, actually, so I want to make sure it is important that, that Mr. Haglund, if we can make sure that the next time we get public input on that, it's well advertised, I'm not saying it wasn't, but I know it was part of the safety committee last time, but I think it may warrant its own standalone type of venue for input, because I, what I don't want to do is, I don't want something that, like that to come, go through all the processes, planning all that, and come to us, and then us feel like we didn't get as much input or we didn't exhaust all means to get input, and then, and then we have to backtrack or, or, you know, you know, throw out a lot of work for nothing.
Right, agreed. So I think this next meeting we're going to have is really the third meeting that we'll have, public meeting, and we'll make sure to advertise it strongly. We think that the first meeting that we had on it, where we were basically looking at all different types of scenarios, that was strongly attended. I think there were between 20 and 30 people at that one. The second meeting, where we then looked at two prefer, or two alternatives, was not as strongly as attended, but we used the same type of outreach. We'll, we'll improve on that for this next one.
Thanks.
Maybe council coming to that one, too. We did have a lot of, they really, they really took up input.
I want to make sure to keep you up to date, too, on where we are with the process, because I know you're getting those emails. I saw them, so...
But you know, Chris, there is, that's the next step to that project going to the Planning Commission, right?
Correct.
There is any public outreach before...
We should go there.
Coming to the Planning Commission?
The only public outreach at this point will be notifying them of this meeting. So, the Planning Commission will take, you know, the, the reports that we provide, public testimony, and then provide direction based on what their...
So, citizens that are watching this right now, I wanted to have another avenue of input or chance to speak about this. They could attend the planning.
Absolutely.
And speak a public comment. Do you know when the next Planning Commission meeting is?
It's the second Thursday of the month, I think it's May 9th.
Okay, it's on the website, it's on the city website, so, okay.
And so we'll make sure to have all the material available in advance and provide that to you as well.
Anything else up your sleeve?
No, thank you.
Okay. Director Solis?
I just ask that council and our citizens be a little patient with all the weeds that you'll see popping up right now. We can't spray when it's raining or when it's windy, and it's kind of been that the last couple of days. And we have a lot of trails and parks and landscaping that we maintain, so we do have a plan, we are going forward with it. So just please be patient. If it's not done within two weeks, let us know. We should, hopefully, we'll get everything done and sprayed by that time.
Armando, who sprays? Is it actually your department or is it the hired-out landscaping department?
Both, depending on what, what area it is.
Okay. Thank you. I see someone moved his mic, so Chief Stockman?
You got to remember to move the mic, then turn it on. April 11th, I represented the city at the Criminal Justice Cabinet. We talked about two items, which was law enforcement records for children that needed to go to court, and then SAC PD did a presentation on their mental health outreach program. So, but other than that, nothing to report for, on that committee. This past weekend was busy, besides the extravaganza, we had our honor guard, which was Officer Castaneda and Officer Hammack at the Fifth Annual End of Watch Memorial Ball. And then this weekend, both of our dogs competed in the San Joaquin County Nico Memorial Canine Competition, and I'm proud to say that both of our teams took the top team award out of all the competitors, and then they won a, each one of the dogs and handler team won a variety of different competitions inside of that competition. So very proud of both of the efforts there. This coming week is National Public Safety Telecommunication, Telecommunicator Week, which is our dispatchers, and Trista Webb is our dispatcher of the year for this year. Coming up, we have, every 15 minutes is April 23rd, April 25th is CDCR's Bring Your Child to Work Day, and we'll be participating in that, bringing out cars and displays for that. April 27th is DEA Drug Takeback, and then on May 2nd is the Sacramento County Officer Memorial, Police Officer Memorial Ceremony at Woodlake Park on Arden Way, and then on May 6th is the California Peace Officer Memorial Induction Ceremony at the Capitol. And that's it.
Rumor has it, there was some kind of contest between you and the vice mayor at the extravaganza?
He lost miserably.
What was that? The pull-ups? No, actually, I think I did one, I think I did two more, but he has the gear, so...
I think he, 400 pounds of gear, is that what it is?
There is zero video of him doing any pull-ups.
You're right.
So he says he did seven, he...
I didn't see it, you're right.
Nobody saw it.
But he quit, he, he went first, so that was unfair, and he quit. I know he had still a few more in him, so...
With 40 pounds of gear, right?
And almost 50, too. I think I, I feel pretty good about that, so...
Okay. City Manager Haglund, have anything?
Well, since I began my interim role just a little over a week ago, I have had the opportunity to meet with each of the department heads and receive a lot of downloaded information, so to speak, and a little bit like drinking from a fire hose at, at times, but I, I just do want to let you know that each of the department heads have been very welcoming and gracious and, and providing me with a lot of information so that we can deal with the items that you set forth for me during my, my role here as the interim city manager, primarily budget and, and beginning to implement aspects of your strategic plan, when, when we get that finally wrapped up. A lot of things happening in the community, and the, the department head team is, is right there working all those issues and, and working with their staff, so thus far, I've been, been very pleased with that and look forward to, to moving all those things forward.
Good to know. And we have a citizen attorney, Iris Yang, welcome. I forgot to welcome you at the beginning.
Hi, thank you. Nice to be back, and nice to see you, and some new faces on the council. I have nothing to report, though, but thank you for letting me come. It's been a great meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion, good to have you back.
Thank you.
Anything?
No, other than the one meeting I attended earlier today, that's it.
Councilmember Lozano?
I have a few things. I want to just say that the extravaganza this weekend, although I couldn't stay the entire time, was very well done, very well organized. Everyone had their pop-ups ready to go for the people that were coming at 9 o'clock, and like I said, it was just really well organized. I like the fact that we have Fourth Street marked with stall numbers, so I was bringing some things for our Rotary Club, and I asked the person at the entry, where do I go, where's Rotary, and he told me the number, and it was really easy to find, and so I really liked that idea. Anyhow, so it was very well done. And so, um, I really liked that idea. Um, anyhow, so it was very well-done. The CAPS Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon last, last week, or the week before?
It was Monday.
Um, last Monday, um, was, uh, a great time. Uh, I think it's really important that, uh, we as a, an organization recognize those who, um, do so much and volunteer in our, in our community. Some of the CAPS volunteers were, um, at like 3,000 hours. That's a ton of time. And, um, and they are very, um, very helpful when it comes to special events and blocking roadways and doing so, those sorts of things, so. Had a great time at that. Um, I also wanted to say Happy Dispatcher Week. I know that's not the name of it, but we'll call it that. Uh, and then lastly, um, the Cosumnas CSD Administration Building is gonna be reopened. They're gonna have a reopening ceremony, and I don't know if you all received an invitation, but
You did.
If you haven't, it's Thursday, April 25th, um, at 5 o'clock at 8820 Elk Grove Boulevard. I, I think it's important for as many of us, uh, from the city of Galt, uh, to go and support our neighbors to the north, um, that, that actually provide great fire service for us here in our city. So, uh, it's April 25th, Thursday, uh, 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And that's all I have, for now.
For now, thank you. Vice Mayor Farmer?
Yeah, a few things. First, uh, welcome back, Kurt.
Thanks.
I know you were dealing with family matters, so. We got our community cleanup day for April with the Beautification Committee. Um, did not have a huge turnout of people, but, you know, it's not about quantity, it's about the quality, what we get done. So I think we had, like, 10 people show up. We had some Girl Scouts, some new faces, and, uh, we did the Old Town area. And, and to precede the extravaganza, we wanna make sure that, you know, we cleaned up that area preceding that event, and, and we, we did, we picked up a lot. It was like a truck pickup load. And, uh, thank you again for Coway's for always donating the dumpster for that. They're very generous to do that, come drop it off and pick it up after. So, um, I wanna thank the Beautification for keep doing that, and if you are interested in being a part of that, um, watch for the dates. Try to post them on, online and, and on the marquees of the parks, um, when we do that. We'd love to see more volunteers. Extravaganza is rich, and, um, as you mentioned, it was, it was awesome, you know, huge attendance, the weather was awesome. I think it was a complete hit. Nothing negative to say at all. Ever, I heard a lot of good feedback from everybody, and it was great to see that many people out, um, enjoying the Easter weather. Like, we found that little pocket of weather between the storms, and it was perfect, so it was great. Went to Civil War Days at McFarland Ranch. That was great. Um, unfortunately conflicted with extravaganza and same weekend. So I think the Historical Society is gonna coordinate with those folks next year and try to, uh, pick a weekend that doesn't conflict and kind of expand on it, advertise a little more, but it, it was phenomenal for even, for being smaller than what they had hoped, but if you have a chance to see that next year, it, we, we actually think that that could be a stellar event for Galt. Um, the people out there that participated, the reenactors, said it's one of the best venues they've ever been to. They loved it. And actually, on that note, they commented on School Day, so on Friday, they bring out the, the children from the schools, and they go around, and it's like a teaching thing. And, uh, one of the, the main guys that's been a part of it forever complimented, um, on how well-behaved the Galt students were. He says, you know, we go to these towns, and some of these students, he said, they were really well-behaved, and they're very tentative, you know, and they, they were paying attention and all that. So I wanted to pass that along to, to teachers and, um, and school representatives out there that, um, had, they were out there, or took their students out there, that they, um, were complimented. And then, um, last thing is, you know, it was good to see, um, our interim city manager, Tom, out. Many events, I've probably seen him, like, so many times since he's been in. I saw him at extravaganza. I hear he went to the Civil War, but I didn't see him out there. Um, but, um, he came to a local, a shop local event. Um, he's been very, uh, out there in the community, and that's what we really want to see, is, you know, him. I introduced him to some people, and I had a couple of citizens come up and kinda were kinda laying into me about something, and he was sitting next to me, and I'm like, well, this is our city manager. It was kinda awkward. But, um, yeah, it was, it was good. We, we, we want him to be a part of the community, and that's what we expect of our city manager, to, to really be out there and, and, again, in the thick of things, and enjoying the, the community and the event. So thank you, Tom, for doing that. And I think that's all ahead.
Councilmember Sandu?
Oh, well, uh, first of all, I'm sorry if, uh, I cannot attend any public events for last week, and I maybe cannot attend for next, uh, next couple of weeks. I'm going to preparation all of my daughter's wedding, so sorry for that. Thank you.
Looking forward to that. I went to the extravaganza. It was, I can't believe it's the 10th time, 10th year. Yeah, it was the 10th anniversary. Um, loved the, um, the promenade that we did for that, so it was a great event. Funniest thing was when they were throwing the eggs off the, the egg drop off the fire ladder, and as soon as he'd throw one, the kids would run under to go see if it broke, and they're like, wait, we have to throw more. Get out of the way. So they, everyone had a lot of fun. Um, great to see some of the restaurants out there, along with the food vendors. It was a, it was a really good day. Really appreciate that. And we can thank, um, Public Director Saling and Gal Weber for getting those numbers on there, so getting, making that happen for our future events. Um, also, I attended the CAPS luncheon, and they're just a wonderful group, and I enjoy that. Every year, it was, it was a wonderful party. They decorated, and so nice to acknowledge them. Um, they were very helpful at the, um, extravaganza. They were just running around, blocking off roads, so the cars didn't come into the event, and doing a great job. Um, the Chamber Luncheon is coming up Thursday at Barsetti's, so hopefully, if, I think it's past RSVB time, but we'll report on that later. And is there, I've had some comments about wanting to move these comments more to the middle of the meeting. This is an early meeting, but when the meetings go till 9, sometimes when we wait till 9 for our accolades, um, the people have left. Is there, I know you've mentioned that you wanna move those comments.
Yeah, I know. I, I think in the past, it's been the front, and it's been the back, and this and that, but I think this, for short meetings like this, it's, it's okay, but we have long meetings sometimes, and there's some things that, you know, like right now, I think a lot of people that would come to a meeting would get really bored with all the mundane stuff that we deal with up here. But we really want to be able to comment on some things that we've done, and things in the community we've attended, and, and things that really relate directly to the people that are watching. And unfortunately, we only get to say it at the very end, and it's like, everybody's like, they're not gonna camp out that long, so I wish we could have, um, a different organization on that, where we could at least have an opportunity.
That's something we want to consider?
I, I, I would consider that. I would just hope, um, want to do it with whatever, within our policy. And if, uh, if we have the flexibility then to do that, then absolutely.
My only concern would be that if you have scheduled matters, that you have people attending, particularly noticed public hearings. I would think that it would be an inconvenience to those, uh, to sit through whatever this portion is, um, when in fact, you know, that's, we're doing the business of the city. Um, and I think that's important. Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I I'd hate to see it just push important issues to a later hour where people are waiting, rather than, than doing it on a more timely, in a more timely fashion earlier on the agenda. That, that's, that's kind of my observation.
Okay, maybe I can look into it with the city manager and see what the, if there's any possibility, or then we'll bring it back to council for some discussion, and see.
Yeah, I, I, I get your point, um, Kurt, and I, I think if, um, we typically, like, if we have, like, citizens that are coming and doing something, we try to, like, put that in the beginning and try to get them out, in and out. If it's something, somebody coming to do a presentation from, you know, I don't know, developer or something like that, I mean
You're gonna say finance, weren't you?
Yeah, no, I mean, I just, you know, I don't, I don't feel that bad about making them people wait, like, just because, I mean, it's a one-shot deal, but for, but weekly, as we, as we have stuff. I mean, I, I, I think, like, at the end of the meeting, where we bring up something that we wanna future agenda, I, I think that that comment time is what I always kinda understood, that, um, our comments at the end could be used for at that end, but it, it tends to be where we tend to thank people for things in the community and talk about events that, like, Chief went to, and, and the comments. And I think it's important that the community, more of the community can see when our department heads comment on things, like, we wanna thank so-and-so for this and that, and that kind of stuff. I know it's not the official business, but I think it's seriously a really important part of what we do. And so that's, that's why I would, that's why I really would like to see it, uh, something in the, more sooner than later.
Okay, I'll work with Tom and see. We'll discuss.
Oh, you have any comment?
You know, uh, I don't have problem with, uh, you know, if all these comments come in the beginning.
In the middle?
Look at the policies, and let's, uh, you know, the city manager bring it to the next meeting, and then we make a decision.
Okay, so we have consensus to bring, to review the procedure guidelines? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. With that
I, I have one last thing. Um, under items for future agenda, um, I had a, a, a very, very brief conversation with, uh, Councilmember Campion. The, actually, at the Strategic Planning Workshop. He probably doesn't even remember the conversation, but, um, uh, and, and then also with Chief Sockman. I, I think it's, um, what I would like to bring back to our council is, um, a discussion about Assembly Bill 392, which, in my opinion, um, does great things to, um, provide, uh, our police officers that work in our city at a great disadvantage. And by doing that, I believe, and I don't, and I know the city attorney's gonna get a little nervous here, but I just believe that it doesn't allow our officers to protect our citizens the way they should.
Nor themselves.
So, um, however we need to do that, um, I would also, with that, like to bring, uh, Senate Bill 3, 230 forward for discussion. Um, I think it's a great alternative to AB 392 and, and provides some additional training for officers, mandated state, state mandated training. Um, and so what I would like to see at the end of this, if the council is, after we discuss it, after, on an agendized item, is, um, either a resolution or a letter of support, uh, for Senate Bill 230, and, uh, a letter of opposition or a resolution of opposition to Assembly Bill 392's to, uh, continue to protect our officers who are out there fighting crime every day and protecting our citizens, so. Chief, do you have any, any insight to this? I, the chief mentioned today that another local city, uh, provided a, a resolution recently on the same issue.
Yeah, so the city of Citrus Heights, at the last council meeting, um, they unanimously voted to, uh, send a letter of support uh, for Assembly Bill 230 and a letter of opposition for Assembly Bill 392. So I think it's very, very important that we, uh, as a community, start to talk about those two issues, uh, those two assembly bills. Because depending upon how, um, it is voted on or approved, uh, through, um, our, our assembly and through whether it goes to the voters or not, um, could drastically change the way, uh, we in law enforcement do our business, and so. But I'll be happy to bring back a presentation if council would like, uh, on those two, uh, and try to provide as much information on both of those bills. So I think that the, uh, the, what I'd like to kind of throw out there, and the attorney can kick me under the table if I've gone too far. Uh, the best way to describe, um, what is being proposed with, uh, 392 is if you're driving on Highway 99 southbound, and you're coming up to Central Galt Interchange, it's a two-lane highway, there's a shoulder on the left, uh, and there's an off-ramp on the right. And if you, um, and all of a sudden, right in front of you, and you're doing the speed limit, and you're doing everything right, and right in front of you, a, uh, a semi-jackknife's right in front of you, and you have to make a decision, split second. We're not talking about seconds, we're talking about a fraction of a second. And you have to make a decision what you're going to do. Are you gonna move to the left, crash in the car in front of you, or pull to the right? And so you make a decision that you're gonna pull to the right, 'cause you know there's an off-ramp that way, and you're hoping that you can swerve and miss that, and there's a minivan full of a family of four on your right, and you strike that minivan, and you kill everybody inside. You made a decision. You think it was the right decision under the circumstances, but you had a split second to make that decision. And, um, because of that decision, um, and because of eyewitness statements, and because people can sit back for days, weeks, months, or years to review all the data that was out there, and then they determine that you made a wrong decision there, you, you will be prosecuted criminally for those actions. And so, um, from our perspective, uh, police chiefs and, and law enforcement, uh, that's what, uh, Assembly Bill, uh, 392 will do to our officers, uh, so. But anyway, that's a little precursor. I, I have, I will, uh, provide a presentation for the future council meeting, um, so. But it's, it's gonna be a tough debate, I think, for the state and, uh, for the voters, and, um, you know, I think just like with every other bill that goes out, you know, it's how they market it. And so this, uh, Assembly Bill 392 is being marketed as a, uh, only using enforcement is necessary. Well, of course, we're only gonna use necessary, but that's how it's being marketed, and so those that don't read and understand what these bills actually say, and what the long-term implications of, uh, the decisions that we make, um, just go back and look at when, uh, the voters voted on Proposition 47. Proposition 47 was the Safe Schools Act. Well, if all that, and the money that was not going into the prisons was supposed to go back to the schools, if that was the case, then, uh, I would be questioning why Sacramento Unified School District has no money. So they haven't seen a dime of that money, and, uh, our streets are not safer, so. Anyway, uh, with that, I'd be happy to bring it back.
I concur. We also can with that? All right. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.